We are live.
All right. All right, we'll now call the city council regular meetings order for August twenty sixth, six P M. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this evening, Lord, and above all, we want to invite you to this meeting, Lord, because we know when you come in that you bring the light, Lord, and where there's light, there is no darkness because they can't exist at the same time. So, Lord, we want to welcome you here. We want to thank you for coming. We want to thank you for giving us clarity and for wisdom, for helping us to make the decisions, Lord, that are the best for the city as a whole. We thank you for understanding in those matters that we don't currently have understanding, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge thee the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember McCure.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item number four. Be Florida Department of Transport Mobility Week. Proclamation.
Jerry, I left that for you.
Whereas Mobally Mobility Week is is ideal time for counties, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight transportation achievements, roll out new initiatives, and or implement new policies promoting multi-modal transportation, and whereas Mobility Week is an opportunity for individuals to explore how various active travel choices like walking, biking, riding, transit, or carpooling reduces traffic congestion can be excellent alternative traveling choice. Whereas since inception, more than one thousand Mobility Week events have been held statewide with over five hundred thousand safety materials to improve safety of people, and whereas during Mobility Week two thousand twenty-three, over two hundred and twenty workplaces and one thousand Floridians record almost eighteen recorded almost eighteen thousand trips through carpool, vanpool, biking, transit, and walking, and whereas Mobility Week is consistent with the city of Avon Park's key priorities, and whereas the city of Avon Park supports Mobility Week by hosting, participating in transportation events such as whatever event we're going to do. Now, therefore, I, Garrett Anderson, mayor, hereby do proclaim the mayor, the week of October twenty-fifth and November second as Mobility Week in the Avon Park and encourage all citizens to explore transportation options available to them and participate in Mobility Week events.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
You earned that one.
That's a tough one.
All right, items number five through nine be on the consent agenda. If no one wishes to remove any of these items, we'll be looking for a motion.
Um, I actually do have a question about C five, or not C five, I'm sorry, the C six for the Christmas parade.
Okay. All right. Are you good with five, seven, eight, nine?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items number five, seven, eight, and nine? On the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items C five, C seven, C eight, and C nine.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I have one comment on the air conditioner. Let's see if we can get extended warranty with that.
Okay.
Wait.
Anything else?
No.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number six, you had a question?
Yes, um, when I look at the estimate for the special events, I noticed that we didn't list the forty-two hundred dollars for the signs, the placement signs. Like we have with others. I was just curious why that wasn't on there. Just out of curiosity.
It may have just been an oversight.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jason can speak to it. That's for the uh, Christmas parade and food truck rally.
I didn't, I didn't charge them for that because it's a city, basically a city event, so, but the one inside the it wasn't um, where we didn't charge anything. Is this the one that's a greater charge inside Donaldson Park, or is this one that was shutting off Main Street?
This would shut off Main Street.
Yeah, since this is a city event, I didn't charge, that's why we have it for city events, city kind of sponsored events. That's why I didn't do it for other organizations outside. That's why that was on there.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Is there a motion? For item number C six?
I'll make a motion that we approve item C six, the Christmas parade and food truck rally.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number ten, this will be resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
So we're looking um.
Jerry has to read the resolution into the record. Sorry, my bad.
A resolution of the city of Avon Park Highlands County, Florida, promulgating a supplement to the personnel rules and regulations manual to implement the longevity benefit for long-term city employees and providing for an effective day.
Okay, Denise, go ahead.
Yes, we're looking for ways to reward our long-term employees. Um, we don't really have anything in place currently uh, to to show our support and thanks for employees who have been here long term. And so this is, this is something that we came up with as a means to do that. It's granting them a longevity personal day off, an extra day off, uh, when they reach their five-year milestones.
Okay, any questions on that?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, any? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve D ten, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eleven, this will be milling and paving. This will be for nine sections granted to excavation point.
So we have a milling and repaving. We're trying to get through this council who spoke about projects that haven't been moving along. So as you can see, there's been quite a bit. We've closed out all the the open P O's that have been out there. So now this year we've had five hundred thousand dollars and coming up on almost a month left, and we can carry forward some of the money, but as you see here, we're gonna we're gonna do paving in um, eight different areas throughout the city than one further out that probably should have been added to the, in Crystal Lake. It's kind of, if you did like a circle around where, you know, like a, let's say a racetrack, but there there was like a U and it, the whole section, it was really bad. And I'd probably like four, four residents called me about it where it's kind of deteriorating is on a bend where the trucks making a turn. And yeah, it's pretty bad. Every time we try to put some coal patch or something, it just gets eaten up. So because of that and getting pictures of people falling with their knees scraped up and everything else, I said, hey, that is probably should have been added into the mix. So I wanted to, you know, add that on, but the others are the areas we have that that we're proposing, we're doing um, doing areas, I guess, in if you add quadrants being Main Street and Central, so we're doing in Northeast, so we're going to hit up some areas in the Northeast. Uh, and then we're going to hit up some areas in the Southwest that um, it's in continuity with other things that we're doing. We've got other projects that we have, some F D O T uh, funded projects like Inoka that's coming along the line. So now Florida right next to it. And we're trying to give a methodology behind this whenever we're we're doing our our jobs. So it looks continuous instead of looking piecemeal, you know, uh, black road, gray road, you know, different. So we're trying to do our best there and then fix roads that just definitely need to get fixed. And then um, coming up here within a month, we're looking at Memorial Drive is going to get paved. And uh, based off of that, then I will add some additional areas to come off Memorial Drive. So when you go down Memorial and you look to the left, it'll have, you know, paved roads off and it'll look continuous. Um, there are some other little repairs that we have to do to the sewer where we have some some undermining of the road. So I want to make sure I get that done first, and then that way uh, when we mill, it doesn't get any potholes or anything along those lines. But that's just moving along. It's all contracted pricing, C P I, trying to move them along much faster than where we were before. And uh, and we'll just keep going.
Is is the memorial section uh, from Freez King to the power plant area or where?
Uh, I think they're, I want, I want to say they're like taking the whole thing all the way up from what I know. I didn't get a Chrissy, do you know a good understanding of, did they tell you how much they were actually doing on the work?
Give me those specific details, but I can follow up.
Is it D O T or the county?
It's the county.
Yeah, county is doing a pretty good portion. They've talked, this is in conjunction with other work that they're doing, so.
Excellent.
You say that E P I caught up with her?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
They done, they've also did, I don't know if you've noticed, but they've been plenty of um, some sidewalk work. So we have sidewalk to go through here too. So the sidewalks usually I can get that done quicker. It's a quicker turnaround. So once we get our the P O's and, but some of those jobs are smaller. So there's a six thousand dollar job over there. The the milling is, it's more, you know, it's more costly, but it's longer stretches, but they get in, you see how fast they get in, they get out, and they do pretty good. And and a good amount that you see there, um, it's just kind of connecting what we, what we've done uh, more in that that northeast section.
Sure.
Off lake.
Any questions on the road construction?
Um, Jason, um, you said on the left-hand side on Memorial. How many streets are you talking about? You did say the left-hand side on Memorial, right?
On 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 Memorial, off Memorial, going down and and looking and starting to pave streets going off of Memorial. So the the roads at the Sims and all the different roads that we have coming on off the side. Because I I've looked, some of those roads are bad, and maybe even some of the interior roads where we can, which we want to spread out the work that's taking place because it's that we don't want to just do it here, there. You know, we want to spread it out, but then wherever we're at, we want to try to tackle an area that way it it looks like an area looks nice, and it looks like it has some kind of.
And I heard you mention sidewalks.
Yes.
Is the memorial sidewalk on the side of Duke Energy is going to be?
That's, that's not, that's not city property over there. No.
Okay, so the county is not going to do anything to it, you know what you're saying?
I mean, I can.
Doing something to the road. So I I know this may be something separate, but have anybody talked to them about the sidewalk as well?
Uh, and I rode by there today and I saw like hardly any maintenance was done out there. I saw grass growing all over it, and I was like, I thought that was pretty poor. So I'll reach out to, or I'll have Jared, our public work supervisor, work out um, reach out to someone there and try to make sure it gets uh, stick edge and cleaned up.
It's been like that for years.
Okay, yeah, it's county versus.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I understand.
And and you had something to do with Memorial getting paid?
Uh, we, it, when we discussed it, when when you brought it up, it was already in this, like kind of came into discussion. I say almost like four months ago, more or less. And so I was like, hey, and I I told uh, uh, Chrissy, I said, hey, here, here we are. Uh, she brought it up. Luckily, good news is is that they're getting ready to pave that, but we needed to do some some sewer line work prior to, and that's what's taking place out there now. It was supposed to be done last week, but something got broken. So now I had to come back. They're coming back this week to do it, and then shortly uh, they'll be, they'll be paving that road.
Thank you for that, Jason. Appreciate it.
It's a great team.
Any other questions on the milling and paving?
No, sir.
Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve D eleven, the milling and paving, nine sections to excavation point.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions.
Yes, I got one more, Jason.
Yes, yes.
You, when you do call the county about Memorial, please have them take in consideration right there at Memorial and Hall McGray. You know how dips?
Yes.
So when they pave it, you know, put some attention on that because when it rains, it sit there in your car hydroplane.
That all get filled in. There won't be any, that's one of the things that we're trying to make sure, because that's those dips are because of undermining of of dirt, of sand over time going into the pipes. So that's, that's the cause of that, and then it gets lined and sealed. That sand's not going to disappear anymore, and then they'll, they'll fill that in. They're, they'll do a good job. I have confidence in them.
Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, this will be R F Q twenty-four dash ten, professional surveying.
Yes, sir. So during the August twelfth city council meeting, we had presented this as part of the consent agenda. Um, you as a council approved it. However, it was not clear as to the designation of first, second, third place in terms of the negotiations for the contract. So we were looking for council to assign a first, second, and third contractor in order to negotiate contracts in case they fail.
Okay, do you have a recommendation for us?
Hyatt was the preferred by staff.
Is it in the order presented on this? Be Hyatt, then Robert Stevens, then Florida Technical?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve D twelve, R F Q twenty-four ten to go to contract negotiations in the following order. First Hyatt survey, second Robert Stevens and Stevens, and then third Florida Technical consultants.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions?
For reasons that I I've seen in in the past, and it's definitely beneficial, I would request that when we do the scoring, that one be allowed to be an alternate in case there's an issue, or and sometimes you you're not necessarily going out for bids, but you can use one versus the other. For some reason, one's not performing as good, and I just find that having alternates, you know, just in, just one additional, I think would be fine.
Yeah.
And um, however you go about this with the scoring, and I I think that would be a good way to go to have an alternate.
Jerry, would it be a problem for uh, Councilwoman McGuire to amend her motion to include the second bidder as the alternate?
No, as long as he's second accepted.
Nope.
That that wasn't part of my original to start with Hyatt, then go to the next, then go to the next.
No, there was no specification of an alternate, so.
Are we?
Well, that was the if it fails with Hyatt, then it goes to the next one down, which is Robert Stevens, and if that fails, then it goes to Florida Technical. So that's what we were, that motion and second was about.
Is it, is it fails, it's like fails in negotiating?
Yes.
Yeah, so you can, you can, you can still do that and rank them how you want, and we would end up using, but when they're negotiating, they're going to give you different prices and but not necessarily go with a better price because C C N A, C C N A, but you can, if that one's, they're, they're caught up or they're having issues or you know, that's like, sometimes when we do engineering, we have, we can have three engineer, like we have three engineers. One's, you know, a little bit caught up right now, we use another one, you know, right? We have Cool and Cobb and.
So are you preferring that we negotiate with a co- a contract with both?
Yes, both.
So he wants a contract with the top two.
Right.
So are we allowed to do that?
Do it.
Sorry, one last question.
He wants a contract both with Hyatt and with Robert Stevens, just in case one was too busy or one has a better price. You know, it's, he want, you want us to sign a contract.
Not necessarily the better price. They have their prices, because they're going to, they're going to get the prices separately. So whatever their prices are, their their prices are.
As far as just workload.
Yeah, and then if someone goes out there and does, because if they give a price, and I don't think it's price, we can negotiate that price. I can kind of say, hey, I, you know, I don't think it's that much, and then it.
I just wonder how that would impact the bid process.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue is, um, you know, if if you had it in the bid package, you're going to select two, the top two. That would be a way to do that, but if you didn't mention it in the bid package, you know, um, number two might get upset.
Yeah, that's why I was posing it. If we can do an alternate, great. If we can't, then I understand.
Just, just, you know, had them, um, you know, state it right in the big package. We, we'll select two and we'll you, we'll use them alternately or something, the top two.
But we don't have to go back out, right?
I would rather we just vote on the motion in the second so we can get this project moving forward, and then in the future, we can revisit this if that need be.
I think that that would be a better, a better choice.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I just, yeah, definitely. Thanks.
So I can leave my original motion.
Correct. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number thirteen, Council Devette, Mr. Dennis Morell, requesting to be appointed to the planning and zoning board.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We had a volunteer uh, come forward interested in serving on the planning and zoning board, so just wanted to get council's appointment, or if they have questions, address any of their questions as well.
Okay. Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Dennis Morell to the planning and zoning board.
Is he present?
If he's, if he's not, and that's my fault. I did not call him, and neither did I do that for Chris Downey.
Okay. Making a motion to appoint Mr. Dennis Morell to the planning and zoning board. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there additional questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, Council Devette, Mr. Chris Downey, requesting to be appointed to the C R A advisory board.
Um, Chrissy, is there a reason why there's no references on here?
The listed references, um, well, first of all, we already know Chris Downey, so I didn't think that they were relevant. And there's, then the references were not anybody we should be calling right now. We can call them if you want to. I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, it's totally up to you.
Okay, are they eligible to be on the C R A if they work in C R A district?
That was my understanding. I've spoken with Jerry before on the issue in in relevance to uh, Bill Jarrett. Because he serves, he no longer serves on the foundation, but he serves for the chamber.
I see.
Am I correct in that, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, I would just, I would like to have, I know we see him sitting out in the audience, but I would like to actually receive three references.
That's fine. We can call those references. It's not.
No, I mean, if we're not supposed to be contacting them, I would like to ask Mr. Downey if he could provide an additional, I don't know who that last person is on the list, but um, I really don't feel like it should be somebody on the board personally. Um, and maybe ask for an alternate for the other one.
Jerry, are we allowed to do that?
Put uh, put him as al- alternate?
Uh, no, it's the request alternate references.
Other than the ones that have already been submitted? Yeah, you can ask for anything you you feel like you need. Don't make a decision.
I'm on, I'm as a reference, I'm, I'm listed as a reference.
I'm confused, Brittany, while we um, requesting for alternate reference.
I don't think Christie's comfortable with calling the first name on the list. Um, not that you couldn't provide a reference, but I feel like if you're making the decision, I don't think you should give the reference and be part of the decision-making process. Um, and then I don't know the third person. You know, we, we know him from coming to the meetings and speaking out, but we don't really have any idea outside of these walls as far as recommending him for that position.
You have a question?
Um, Maria Sutherland, nine hundred West Main Street. Shouldn't this be a C R A board decision, not a council decision?
Yeah, the actual appointment of uh, somebody to the the um,
To the board?
Advisory council, yeah. No, they don't, they don't select advisory board. That's been done by the the, the actual board itself is um, set, but the advisory board, I don't think you, have you ever done that by?
It's always been city council appointment.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that they have the, I, I'd have.
No, no, not the advisory board, the C R A board, this board as a C R A board.
Right, the C R A's board sitting as as a, the board sitting as a.
But all the other processes.
Make the decision as to the advisory board?
Right.
No, I, my understanding, it's always been done by the city council.
So if that's the case, then what do you need a C R A board for?
Well, they have a lot of things they do, Maria.
Well, I'm just asking because I know that in the past, way back when it was a C R A board, and then the council who ended up approving the C R A board's decision.
Yeah. Okay. I think, I think it's okay. I mean, I've never heard of it, you know, being absolutely necessary for the C R A board itself to make the uh, the decision. Uh, the council is, you know, selecting an advisory board with their authority.
Okay. Any other questions?
I would, I would like to make a motion just to table this one until we can get three alternate references.
Okay.
Feel like we don't have any information based on this at this point.
Understood.
That's your motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
No.
Councilmember Taylor.
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
No.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion to table fails.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We just go ahead and approve Chris Downey for the C R A advisory board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
You're not going to require any references for him?
He has references on there. I, I'm.
There's, if there's names and there's phone numbers, but there's not an actual reference.
So there's references on Dennis Morell's too.
I'm confused, Brittany, when you say there's names and there's phone numbers, but there's.
Perhaps I can offer clarification. Sean Holliday is listed as one of the references. Given light of the circumstances, I made an executive decision not to call. Shelley serves on the council, so I I figured that in and of itself would be enough. I was missing, I was incorrect in making that distinction, and that is fine. We will do the reference checks. It, it won't be a problem.
To clarify, Bernice, like if you go up to um, Dennis Morell's, and I know we've done this for every other one, you actually see where these references have been contacted and they give an opinion.
Uh huh.
So if you go down to um, the one with Chris, there, there are no opinions of anything. So that was my motion is to table it until we actually got an opinion. I feel like that's the only fair thing to do. I mean, it's up to him as far as who he lists as those references to be able to have, we have nothing in writing that tells anything about his character outside of these four walls. I'm not saying there's anything bad in it. I'm just saying I think it would be wise to actually have a reference listed in his application.
I.
Well, I thought it would be wise to have him to show up. I mean, if we're going to ask for a reference, why not have him to show present? So we got some questions for him. We can, we can ask them in person.
That was on me, Bernice. I didn't call them.
Sure. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions?
Are we already voted?
No, we haven't voted yet. There was just a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
No.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
I'm sorry, no, I don't know.
The motion was to approve Chris Downey.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, item number fifteen. City Attorney Burr, twenty twenty-four fee agreement.
As you recall, somewhere around February, March, I told you to raise my rates twenty-five dollars. Um, so you had it there for budgeting purposes, and this is just the agreement making official. As I mentioned before, it doesn't take effect till October first. As I mentioned back in February or March, or whatever it was.
Any questions for Jerry on this agreement?
I, I have a question. Um, I don't, I don't know if it's written anywhere in our charter that you absolutely have to be here. Would a Zoom meeting, would that be something that you could do instead of traveling and cut down the travel time?
Uh, I don't think it'd be efficient, but if you all decide that you want me to do it by Zoom, then I do it by Zoom.
Zoom is very problematic and can be very irritating.
Well, it's, it's hard to follow everything from Zoom when you're at a meeting like this.
And then if the internet were to go down or we had technical difficulties.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Burr, didn't you ask for a raise last year? You did not.
No, I've, they had the same rate since two thousand and.
Twenty-one, it says, according to the letter.
Twenty-one, yeah. Twenty-one.
Any other questions?
Twenty twenty-one. That, that's just what his letter says.
Right. What it was.
There's no further questions. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve D fifteen, City Attorney Burr, twenty twenty-four fee agreement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Council member McGuire?
Yes.
Council member McCure?
No.
Council member Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number sixteen is to be City Manager Candidate Interview Scoring Results and Approval to Move Forward with Background Check.
So on August seventeenth, we, uh, met with three candidates. Council interviewed Danielle Kelly, David Lynch, and James Tanner. Um, after the interviews, they've provided their scores based on a, a rating metrics. And out of a hundred and seventy potential points, Danielle Kelly, uh, came in with a hundred and fifty. David Lynch came in with a hundred and fifteen point forty, and James Tanner came in with eighty-nine points. So at this point, uh, council would need to decide if they want to move forward, uh, with any of the three applicants, and if so, which ones, and if so, then I'll begin the background check process.
Questions, comments? We asked for candidates. We got some candidates. We scored some candidates. Do we want to move forward with them? And that's for background checks. Then we've discussed, uh, we're gonna do background checks on at least two, just in case anything prevents one from actually accepting a position. Uh, obviously, we don't have to accept any of them if we don't wish to. So it's entirely up to the council what they want to do.
I don't know. I honestly think I'd like to just maybe put it back out and get a, um, a recruiting company to maybe go out and do a search for us instead of running it where we did. For two weeks.
And, and, um, Shelley, can I ask you why that is? Can it, can you, can you get an opinion?
I, I don't know. I just, I don't, after going back and I just, I'm not feeling any of these candidates were qu- as qualified as we were looking for. And, and I may not share that same, anybody may not share that same opinion with me, but I, I just don't feel like none of the three were very satisfactory to me.
Okay. Any other opinions, questions, comments? Obviously, it's a very important decision. We do need direction in the city. Definitely need to move forward.
Okay, here we go. I was waiting on you, Jim.
I know you were. I'm waiting on you.
Um, I had a candidate in mind. And, uh, I thought it was, I thought it was very powerful. I thought that candidate would take this city places that Avon Park needs to go, Avon Park wants to go.
Ms. Taylor, can you put, I can't hear you down here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
I had, I had a candidate in mind. Of all the three, like I said, um, I thought that particular candidate could take us Avon Park places that we haven't been in a long time. I thought they were very strong. I, I just felt good about it, and I was, I paid attention. I, I, I read the, um, the resume. I paid attention to when they spoke. I thought personally myself, I had a, um, I thought we had a good candidate. I still do think we have a good candidate. The only problem with the second, my second choice was if we did decide to go with my second choice, I would love to have a second interview with the second choice because there's more questions that I think that I would be, I would love to ask our second choice, so. With that said, I had a first and a second.
Well, in that case, I just had a first. You can see by my scoring.
Yeah, so to be clear, your, uh, first choice, judging by your scoring, would have been Mr. Lynch, second choice being Ms. Kelly?
That is correct.
Okay.
My first choice is Ms. Kelly.
Okay.
With no second.
Anyone else?
I mean, I, I listened and made a lot of notes as well. I mean, I, I'm not gonna say there was any one that stood out as being the perfect match. I felt like there was pros and cons for a couple of different reasons. Um, I would, I would have liked to ask additional questions. I mean, in a perfect world, we would be able to try them out and see whether or not they work. That would have been awesome to do a trial process, cause you only get to know somebody so much by the hour that we get to come to them face to face. I've done extensive searches online and social media and just trying to see, you know, where they've come from and all of those kinds of things. Um, I mean, sitting here tonight, I don't feel like I have a perfect answer. My scores were relatively close. Um, I feel like the, the second candidate definitely had more, um, experience in all of the areas of the city. Necess- I don't know if that was necessarily, you know, good experience or not. Um, both the first and the second candidate came off as, as being very, um, I guess capable of handling the situation. Um, the, the last gentleman, I feel like he just kind of lacked, um, the experience as the other two. But I don't have one that I'm just like, that's perfect, let's do it. But I'm not necessarily closed off to going further and doing some additional investigation um, and background checks and things like that with the first two.
I, I had, uh, I, I agree with a lot what you said. I had, uh, at least four points, problem with the, uh, second candidate. Um, one of the things I believe that one of his last positions, he didn't last very long. I wonder why not. Um, second thing is the fact he's a previous prosecutor. I don't think we need somebody who was a prosecutor to be our city manager. Um, I think he, uh, over-sold himself. I think if, if he, if he didn't, then he's definitely overqualified. Don't know how long he would stay. And the thing that hit me the worst was his last comment saying, I have three more interviews coming, so you better get me now. I do not want that man.
Okay. So we gotta obviously agree on what we want to do going forward. So as I said, we don't have to pick any. We can pick one, or we can ask for more interviews, um, with any of them, so. Do we want to ask more questions? Is that what I'm hearing?
Do we have, do we have to ask the same, same questions? I guess that's what's kind of throwing us off, cause I'd like to ask this one, these types of questions, and this one in particular, I saw the same thing that you did, but more about past positions and things like that.
Maybe there's still a follow-up with two candidates?
My question to the mayor, did you have any comments on any of the candidates?
Yeah, I mean, scoring-wise, my, my top candidate was, uh, Ms. Kelly for sure, and echoing kind of what Jim said, I think that the second candidate certainly was probably had the most, according to what they said, had the most experience, um, for city-related issues. However, I think personality-wise, there would be some, some problems. I think he would rub people the wrong way. Um, he probably was a little too sure of himself. Um, and as Jim said, he, he oversold himself for sure. So sometimes that can be because you're nervous. I don't, I don't know if that's how he is all the time, but that's certainly the feeling that I got. Um, Ms. Kelly, of the three choices that we had, certainly had the best balance, um, that I could see, so.
Definitely did her homework.
Sure, I mean, she's very.
And she also was the only one that kept to the time limit.
She's certainly very interested in Avon Park. Um, give her that. I know she's took it upon herself to really look into different things going on and talk to different departments and whatnot, so give her kudos for that. Um, she certainly seems like she would be very interested in doing a good job. Um, she would probably pour her heart and soul into it. I don't think anybody could deny that. Um, so, but as I said, I don't think any of the candidates were absolutely perfect, but I don't think that we're ever gonna find a perfect candidate.
I agree.
Um, but certainly we should do our best to find the best candidate that we can, so. We can go back out, or we can ask more questions. I think if we're gonna ask more questions, um, we obviously need to select who we're gonna ask questions to. We need to talk to Denise more about seeing what kind of questions we can and can't ask to try to find out the information that we're actually trying to find out here. Um, but it's entirely up to the council, so, or you can table it. You can do nothing. It's, we got lots of options. We have a, a funk, a functioning situation right now, you know, so we don't have to do something absolutely tomorrow. Um, but we certainly need to move forward.
I agree. I don't want to see us to go past the next election. Well, and, and you do, you will lose good candidates if you wait too long. It's been my, my experience in doing this for thirty-two years. I, I think we lost some other candidates that would have been in my consensus. Um, one of which because he had other options and took it, took those options because of the length of time that we had. It, it, I, I wouldn't be, uh, I, I think that, uh, if you want to bring back two candidates, I think obviously the third candidate, I don't think anybody scored him that well. Uh, if we want, maybe just have, uh, each council member turn in one, two, or three questions and see if that passes. Uh, HR directors is, and it could be personal questions about that person's character, previous job experience, whatever. We could do that, or we could, uh, I think that would probably be the easiest or quickest way. Maybe you have us all come up with three questions, ask the top two choices of our consensus. And just have those be personally, if, if allowable, to have those questions just towards that candidate.
Okay.
Is that possible, Gary? Well, it, I gotta say, it's a little risky, um, as long, but if as long as, um, you run it past, you know, your labor council or, um, uh, human resources, uh, you know, the questions, you know, just to make sure that we're not asking something that's that even though it seems appropriate, is inappropriate, because that's. That's why I said, you turn in our questions and make sure that they're approved. Sure. Um, and then maybe you might want to consider, if you're gonna do that and bring them back, at least give them the, you know, tossing the bone that, you know, we'll make a decision that night, you know, and that way, you know, somebody will say, well, this is not gonna go on and on and on, so let me just go ahead and take a shot and, and coming back and, and then being done with it. As opposed to, you know, if it's gonna be this, and then they're gonna wait till the next commission meeting to make their, their mind up. I'm gonna take this other job because I need to get started somewhere. I agree with that.
Yeah. So obviously, the first hurdle we need to pass is, do we want to move forward with any of the candidates that we currently have? So we need to decide that first. And then if we do, then we probably need to go ahead and select for background checks, so we can at least get that process started. We don't want to wait thirty days just to get that back before we ask more questions, so.
So can we ask additional questions and do the background check simultaneously?
That would be the idea.
Well, like I said it earlier, I had my number one, but I also said that I had an alternate. So if I'm gonna get voted down for my number one, then um, I go with the alternate. So to answer your question, yes, I think that we should go with two of the one moving forward. We should pick one or the other going forward.
Is that the consensus is to move forward with the people that we have?
Yes.
We've got.
Say so, yes.
We've got one.
It's me.
What, all three people?
No, just two.
Two?
I'm saying, do we want to throw all of them out, or do we want to move forward with the, with at least the three that we have?
I don't think it necessarily go through with the third candidate. I don't think he's.
Right, we're, we're not arguing that. It's just, do we want to pick any of the three is what we're hard headed about right now. Okay. We've got two to move forward with at least one of the candidates that we have, as.
So what are we gonna do if the background check comes back? Not satisfactory, and the second interview comes back not satisfactory? Then we waste more time and keep going.
One that's satisfactory.
Yeah.
Out of the two.
That's your only choice you have.
And if we don't choose, if we decide not to go with that, the last choice, then we put it back out there.
Yeah. All right, well, it seems clear that we're probably moving forward. So do we want to go ahead and pick, uh, the top two vote-getters, um, to do background checks on them? Denise, can you remind us what the cost was for that?
Um, for the standard background, it's gonna be about sixty dollars, but then we also have to do the, uh, credit score as well, so that's not a cost. I have to locate a company to do that.
Okay, so does, uh, anyone want to make a motion to go ahead and do the background check on, uh, Ms. Kelly and Mr. Lynch?
And, and Mayor, one more question. Did, did, is that what we decided to do, Ms. Denise, go with the standard background? Is that what we decided?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because it's, it's, it covers like ten different areas. We, we talked through all of that.
Okay. All right.
Does anyone care to make that motion?
I'm sticking with Ms. Kelly.
Okay, is there a different motion? That someone wants to make?
What do you, what do, what'd you say, Jim?
I said I'm sticking with just background on Ms. Kelly.
He hasn't made a motion yet. That's, that was just a comment.
I, I, yeah, I feel like we, I mean, if you make a motion and you just go with one, and then something pops up, then.
Would you like to make a motion for the top two?
Pending background checks and additional questions?
Uh, what we're asking is, do we want to go ahead and pick two to do the background check on only? We're not actually.
I'll make the motion, Mayor. I, I make the motion, we move forward with, uh, the top two, which Ms. Kelly, Ms. Lynch, background checks and follow-up questions. Okay, with each, and decide how many we are allowed to ask.
Probably we'll leave the questions off, so we can talk about that.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to do the background checks for Ms. Kelly and Mr. Lynch.
Yeah.
And go ahead with some additional questions that we'll determine in the future. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yes, how long did we say? I, I know you guys probably said it, but I just don't remember. The background checks normally take how long?
It depends on how extensive their background is, uh, because we're looking at previous employers, personnel references, and those kinds of things. Could be two weeks, three weeks.
Okay, so we're gonna do the interviews after those come back, right?
Uh, we can do them simultaneously. We can pick a day. Uh, the one candidate is from out of state, so I think we talked before, we would offer the second interview as a Zoom interview, and then one would be local, and we could just pick the date and time to do that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Does that motion include making a decision, uh, at that time?
Not yet. We're getting there.
Okay.
Getting there. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any last questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Council member McGuire?
Yes.
Council member McCure?
Please explain the motion. I'm so sorry.
We made a motion to go ahead with background checks for Ms. Kelly and Mr. Lynch.
Yes.
Council member Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Obviously, the point was to ask additional questions. We should not wait until the background is done before we ask those questions. Though, scheduling-wise, what do you think we could do?
What do you think?
We can schedule a special meeting on a Monday night or another Saturday morning. I mean, it's whatever.
We can set up a calendar.
Either quicker, I think. Let's move forward.
Yep, hopefully the background checks aren't longer than two weeks.
So would September fourteenth, which would be in two weeks, the Saturday in two weeks, would that be acceptable? As the background checks come back in time?
I reckon. Any other suggestions?
Would that be first thing in the morning, nine o'clock?
We would do it the same way, only at city council chambers.
Do we have any, um, before meetings to any of our council meetings coming up?
We've got September ninth is when we have the CRA joint session, so we wouldn't be able to do that.
Right.
September third is gonna be for the recorded decision I mentioned earlier. Um, so I, I mean, that would be the earliest I could see. We got September second is Labor Day. So.
I would like to add too, that if one of the candidates decides not to, uh, come back, whether they pass the background check, that we go with the one that did pass and came back. One of the candidates may, who had three other interviews to do, may not be available by the fourth, he may be gone, so. I think if that's the case, we should go with the.
I think we should wait and see what all comes back first and what.
There's something that we needed to consider.
Can, can I just say something?
It, that just may happen.
Yes.
I was gonna say, typically what happens is, now that you've given me the two names, I'll call each of the individuals to say that we're wanting to go forward with them in the process of background. They may tell me at the phone call, I'm not interested now. So, so that is a possibility too. Just so you know.
Okay, and remind us again of the dates that you were talking about.
So I s- I suggested September fourteenth, which would be the first Saturday, that we would have some availability. Because we have. Because we have the September third potential meeting, September second's a holiday, September ninth, we already have two meetings.
Five is the fourteenth.
I guess it'll be then. Hopefully we'll have the background by then.
And we'll set it for nine AM.
That'll work.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
Are members of the council able to sit with them personally on a personal level?
I, I'm going to divert to legal on that one.
I think we said we could after.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, any reason why not, but you know, if you're going to ask them questions, just make sure they're not illegal questions.
Yeah.
What Jerry said.
And what time is that? Nine o'clock on the fourteenth?
Yes, ma'am. Nine fourteen.
So, so, so let me make sure I understand you right, Mr. Ver. You saying now between now and the interview on the ninth of next month, we can sit down with the candidates on a, on a
I wouldn't recommend that we have a, you know, that we all attack them. What did your labor, but labor council say about that?
No, I guess what I'm just saying is Shelley asked a question. So if Shelley wants to go and sit down dinner and lunch with one of them, it's okay. Know what you're saying? Before, before the next interview.
I don't know.
I believe Brian Cody may be on. Give me just a second.
If, if you're talking about legally, I'm simply saying, I don't know of any reason why not, but if you're talking about whether it's good policy or not, then I would think that it may not be, and that's something you guys need to make a decision on, not me.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to follow through with, uh, having an interview, we should do it all at the same time. That would be the best policy. But on that note, um, Jim had mentioned two or three questions each in the council. Is that what you want to stick with?
I'll give you the option of three odd number.
Okay. Is anybody else, uh, okay with that? Close that different idea?
So we'll each come up with three per candidate.
That's, that's what the proposal was.
I'm good with three.
You're good?
I'm good with three.
We've got some takers. What do you say?
Good.
Three it is.
I mean, it's three questions that we're going to turn into Denise, but well, we may have other questions like we did on last Saturday where there were piggyback questions. Remember we piggybacked some questions on?
We just try to keep that to them.
But we're going to keep it to now, right?
Yes.
And when is this due, Denise?
Uh, if we're going to have the interviews on the fourteenth, it, by the Wednesday before that, if possible, so I can put them together and get them back out.
Okay. I guess we don't need a motion for that.
You mean the eleventh or the fourth?
I would prefer we have a motion on that.
Okay. Do we have a motion? To ask three questions per council member? For our interview process on the fourteenth?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Anything else on the city manager position?
What, what day did you want them back? The Wednesday before the Saturday?
The Wednesday before the fourteenth.
All right. So the eleventh. Thank you.
There you have it. All right. Moving on to the number seventeen, this will be the executive session.
Yes, sir. I'm just going to make an announcement for all those who are attending by Zoom. We will be, uh, recessing this meeting for the executive session, so I will stop the recording, but you can remain in the waiting room and will be readmitted when we start the regular proceedings again.
All right. City council meeting is back in session. We're moving on to item number eighteen, this will be the city attorney update.
Yeah, I don't have anything in addition to what we've already talked about.
Okay. Item number nineteen, regular updates from interim city manager.
A question on the, um, the I eighteen.
Okay.
This is the registration where you're wanting to go to a training, right? I eighteen?
E eighteen.
E eighteen, yeah.
The FRA conference.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I guess my, I didn't see that in the agenda. But yeah, that, that's, um, a request I made last year. Uh, this time I don't need to stay in a hotel because it's in Tampa. So I'm just going to go down for, for one day or possibly two most.
So usually when you do that, do you have other cities that you represent pitch in also?
Well, I only have one other city with the CRA. That's Bowling Green. They're very small. But I, but I can, I can ask them if they'd like to chip in on that as well. Uh, everything else I, I do allocation wise, you know, mileage or the, um, um, all the, uh, expenses for the other, um,
I mean, because if it's going to benefit other cities, why should we be the one to solely pay for it?
I'll, I'll ask them about that, but understand that their, their CRA is fairly new and they're not, it's not as developed as yours.
Okay.
So, um, so it's not.
I understand, but they'd still benefit from your expertise. Okay.
Okay. Maybe looking for a motion for approval on that? Is that right, Jerry?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion to approve it with the stipulation that the other city would be interested also, can chip in also.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? If in the event the city, uh, the other city does not chip in, are we going to send them anyway?
Yes.
Dave, was that part of your motion?
Yes.
Uh, you didn't make a motion. Is that part of Shelley's motion?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
All right. That is part of the emotion. Is that part of the second as well? Jim, okay. That's understood. Any for, any further questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard? Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, thank you all for that. Uh, I did want to mention not, also that I, I did not go to the, the one that I will go to every year this year because it, it was, um, not a goo- good time for me. The long, long-term one, so.
Item number nineteen, city manager updates. What do you got?
Yes, sir. So originally I had said no bid updates, but I would like to present an update on, uh, an older bid from last year. The brickle building. Um, I just want to address some of the concerns that have been made known to me regarding that. I have brought copies of the bid responses with me. Should anyone wish to review them, uh, the bid was conducted in accordance with the city's purchasing policies. So I've brought three copies with me. If I run out, uh, people are more than welcome to come visit me in the city manager's office and I'd be happy to make more copies for them.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. Um, so we have an FAA update. Nick Clabbers, David Banner and the fam team did participate in a call with the FAA on August twentieth, during which they were able to resolve nearly all of the FAA's outstanding questions. The FAA advised the record of decision should be done by tomorrow. I, I say that should be
Cautiously.
Um, barring something catastrophic, it was confirmed that it would be ideal to get the assumption and assignment agreement signed before the record of decision. Uh, however, Lorene Hurson Jones of FAA agreed to check internally to see if they would be able to make it a condition as opposed to actually having to have that signed ahead of time. Um, so there are several items that are going to be needed as conditions in the record of decision. Among those will be the assignment and assumption agreement, which I just discussed, and that is the one that we would need to consider scheduling the meeting for September third. So after my report, if I could get a motion to that effect, that would be great. Um, completion of the specific capital projects and response to the tenant comments within a year. And in the event that fam terminates or walk, walks away from the lease, submission of a re-transition plan indicating how Florida airport management will hand back the airport to the city. The only things the city owes the FAA at this point includes the current loan balances, which Melody has provided to them. The current balance of the enterprise fund, which, um, we were waiting for BSA, but I believe she did receive that and submitted it. Um, also a letter of no objection from F dot. Lorene, uh, from the FAA is also going to check on this and see if they can, uh, maybe adjust it to include this as a condition as well. So as not to hold up the publication of the record of decision. Um, so again, we would just like to ask that we be able to hold a special meeting in anticipation for this record of decision tomorrow.
And you want it for September the third?
Yes, sir.
At six PM?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to hold a special meeting? September the third at six PM, still so move? Jim?
Sir.
All right. Is there a second?
My second.
We have a second. Any questions?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
No question.
Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number two of your updates, the event update requests, is that
Yes, thank you very much. I skipped that. Um, Auto Options is requesting use of the median in front of their, uh, place of business, which is one oh six West Main Street as an extra space for vendors. They had way more vendors than they had originally anticipated. So they just wanted to see if council would be amenable to that.
Uh, was that section of Main Street already being closed?
Um, not for, I, I don't think so because they had had it set up to be on their business as much as possible and along Main Street. So the medium was never discussed. So I counsel that it would probably be a good idea to address you guys and see if that's something you'd be interested in.
Wanting to close Main Street for the event.
Not to, I believe so.
It was already.
It was to close it. Thank you.
Okay. Was, was it already part of the original? You said it was?
Yeah, I thought it was.
At least one side of it, I thought.
Yeah, it's, um, it would be closed. I don't, I can't recall if they were requesting both sides to be closed. I mean, I, it'd be, be nice if it was just one side, but I, I don't, I don't see, I don't see why we couldn't. Um, you know, they could, they could use it. We don't really have any infrastructure in there besides a pump, but that's well secured.
Is there, wh- wh- what was the date of the event again?
It's in November. I'm pulling up the details right now.
So we got time.
It was November second.
Sure.
I'm trying to see if I found their proposals if the road was closed. And they, they did ask for road closures already.
They did. Yeah. So the road closure was from Ferguson, Ferguson Avenue approaching North Lake Avenue.
On Main Street?
On Main Street.
Okay. If the road is already going to be closed, do you see any additional thing that they would need to use that?
No, I just, I'm, I'm, uh, mark out the irrigation heads or whatnot, try to tell them to stay off of those and
Yeah.
and, uh, just make sure they don't hit anything.
So they're going to put their vendors up on the grass on the median?
A few of them. They had more vendors than they had anticipated, so they ran out of room. So that's why they wanted to utilize the space.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Sure. Yeah, I don't think it really affects, um, much of anything different than they were already expecting, so.
New, um, vineyards on the grass, not vehicles.
Vendors, yes.
Yeah, prob- probably like a food truck.
Little tents, things like that.
Okay.
Okay. So tents, not trailers. They're not pulling trailers up on the median. Uh, is, are we okay with that?
Yeah, that's true. When you say trailers, what type of
Like a food truck trailer.
On top of, in the medium?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if the road's going to be closed, I'm okay with it.
I was curious.
I mean, we could request that the trucks be in the street and then tents be in the grass.
Yep.
I think I would do that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I would, I, I'd like that better, actually.
Okay. Does anyone care to make that motion? We have a motion. We have a second. Last call for questions.
Uh, who made the second?
I did.
Shelley made the second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Anything else to the city manager?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. We had one sign up. Ms. Jane Benham, if you can come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Jane Benham, six oh five South Acre Street, Sabring, Florida. I'm here, um, because of the last city council meeting, um, and I just wanted to say a few things.
Okay.
Um, I'm appalled, but not shocked by the actions of these self-proclaimed community leaders, advocates and business owners at the last council meeting. I'm not shocked because I've been dealing with this bullying, harassment and childish high school-like behavior since October of twenty twenty-three. It took a while for people to listen to me because what has happened to me by these individuals and their bit, their family members is so alarming, disgusting and shameful that it's almost unbelievable. But as you all saw at the last city council meeting, these people will go to extreme depths of manipulation, lies and deceit. And people are starting to see it for what it is. These individuals claim to be here for generations, and yet where have they been up until this point? They want to get involved in certain organizations, but claim to feel uncomfortable. So why did they wait until I joined these organizations to get involved? If they lived here for so long, shouldn't they already be members? They accused me of terrible things at the last meeting like theft. Where's the police report? What did I steal? Because I would like to know. See, when you accuse a person of these things, but you don't supply proof, it's determined to be hearsay. A term these individuals don't like because they've been told it numerous times recently. Why? Because they follow me to every organization I'm affiliated with or go to certain board of directors with these accusations only to be told that this drama and nonsense does not belong to these organizations. They defend bad actions without knowing the facts. They accuse with no proof and they slander without remorse. They've said multiple times that I have a victim-like mentality, then what am I? Constant emails are being sent about me with false information, meeting with city officials with false accusations, news articles and posts with false narratives being spun, letters being sent to my house with belittling and hateful comments signed in blue ink, pictures of my property being taken when I'm not home and being sent to every single county commissioner asking them to deny me future opportunities. Or if I'm not the victim, when their family members come to my place of business and hold up signs calling my vendors weirdos and calling me a dirtbag. What, what I have said tonight comes with actual proof, color coordinated, per individual in chronological order. These individuals have an immature high school clique-like mentality, and if you take a hard look, it's the same individuals over and over. They all make the same phone calls, same emails, same accusations, but think that people aren't smart enough to put the pieces together. I'm being blamed for the termination of Sean Holliday. That's completely false, so let's consider the facts. Sean Holliday had an evaluation conducted on him in which the results you yielded not satisfactory. That was prior to the complaint being made. Sean Holliday's probation period was also extended prior to the complaint. I read an article recently where Sean was interviewed and admitted that the reasoning behind his termination was violating city policy. No one fails an evaluation and has their probation extended if they were doing their job correctly. A failed evaluation extended probation period had already taken place prior to any complaint being filed by me. A thorough investigation was conducted whether his friends, oh, I'm sorry, the self-proclaimed community leaders, advocates and business owners believe so. One complaint doesn't get someone fired, someone's actions get themselves fired. So thank you to Councilwoman Shelley McCure for throwing out the fact that my information can be found on SunBiz. While researching my business, I encourage everyone to research the alliance that was formed within the city. Look at the registered addresses, presidents, board members and the treasurer. And then look around at the people attending tonight's meeting, or better yet, watch the YouTube video of the last council meeting. You'll notice it's the same people again and again, over and over. This organization claims to be business owners wanting to make a difference and lift each other up and to have a safe place to live, work and play. Well, from my point of view, these individuals have done the complete opposite. All I've seen is them slander another business owner in the community and trying to paint the city of Avon Park in a negative light. When these people don't get their way, they throw tantrums, threaten to send emails or make phone calls. And hey, they'll even call Crime Stoppers with false accusations because yes, that's happened multiple times.
Five minutes.
I also made copies because I know I wasn't going to finish in time. So can I pass them out so everyone can have a copy? And I have one for you.
Uh, thank you.
Well, I would just comment that, um, we should not, the uh, council and, and staff should not comment on the, this, um, job matter. Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. That was our only sign up. That concludes our agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the city?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You can, I would just caution you from opening up a can of worms here.
It's just.
Okay. Okay. If if Jane wants to answer, then she can. It's when you get back up here, you just have to give your. Okay. If you'll just give your name and address again for the record.
Jane Benham, six oh five South Egret Street, Sabring Florida. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I went to the um CRA advisory board. It was unanimously voted yes by every single one of their um members. Um, I had the green light to come here, but I had a gut feeling that these individuals were going to come here. So I went to Mark Schrader's office and asked if he would take me off the agenda because I didn't feel comfortable. And sure enough, those individuals came here walking in with binders thinking that I was still on the agenda, but I had already removed myself. Because I don't feel like the drama has anything to do with the city and I don't even know why it's here. And I'm only here because of, sorry, I lost my voice. I'm only here because my name was a hot topic last, the last meeting, and I just wasn't there. So I pulled it because what happened at the last meeting would have happened when I proposed Main Street. And that email that was sent when they came to my house, they took pictures of my property, they emailed every county commissioner, asking them to deny me the Main Street program.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.